Hey.
Been waiting for a moment. No, right, Mark, I'm just waiting on it.
I thought we were speaking and we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're starting off by saying that I keep my phone on specifically because we're waiting for a phone call at my because I'll get up and walk out and take that phone call. And entertain a motion to move the agenda.
Second.
Motion, but second. Any conversation, not hearing any, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, it's unanimous. So, Maureen, you are up.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and for the work. This year has been a busy year for the planning department. We've had increased board adjustment cases, they used the tech amendments. We've had twenty-five applications in the last since July for tech amendments, special use amendments, subdivisions. So, we've got a lot going on and some of our major accomplishments and our comprehensive plan under review in the division of coastal management. Our historic district design standards and the local district report are ready and we did get to submit that to the state. We did that initially. We have kicked off our multi-modal transportation plan and we have applied for a grant for presenting a coastal remedies program to take the plans that we have and find implementation projects so we can get some on the ground publics ready to go. They'll help us find where that money is for that. That's a hundred percent grants.
Help me with the, when is that, when is the cutoff for that grant?
That grant cutoff was at the end of April.
So, we've applied.
Yes, sir.
Do they have, do they know when they're going to, May eighth or ninth?
I believe it's going to be in June when they, they will be announced in Adelaide, yes. They want to start as soon as possible.
Assuming that we get that. Assuming that we get the grant. How much do we ask for it, or do they tell you how much?
They tell us how much it would be. I think they, they said that it's average for the phase two, so what I applied for phase two, since we have some plans in process that we weren't ready for on the ground implementation yet. So, I believe it's going to be under, oh, like eighty thousand, something like that. And they, they shoot the consultant, consultants all the work and we just help them with the background information and it gets taken care of for us. It's all covered.
So, the consultant. Do we write the contract for the consultant or do they write?
They write the contract and it's a hundred percent grant, so there's no match.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. My word. So, some of our, we're also working on our right of way enforcement and our action plan is on schedule. We're going to be sending out our reminder letters this week for everyone who is still working to get in compliance with that. Again, those are not violations at this point. We're just asking, this is our great spirit to come into compliance for the, the new ordinance. And we, we've been working a lot and getting our minimum housing taken care of. We've got some, see homes taken care of with our own projects, so we're working hard on that. Our goals are adoption of the comprehensive plan and start implementing that as soon as we can. Some of our blood painting through getting our historic district adopted so we can start working on that and get that taken care of so we can really start working on some good products. Want to get a lot of these plans underway so we can actually start good planning with implementation for the city. With that, and I anticipate an increase in redevelopment and fill. I mean, we know that the city limits, there's not a lot of thick, there's more basically than you think, but really I think it's going to be more of a redevelopment in the next couple of years than the new infill.
And for redevelopment. Can you help me with understanding some of this? There's this, this discussion for the planning board. Bypassing them and going to the board of adjustment. How does, how does that? How does one get to do that? Not supporting that, I'm just asking. That people are choosing to go to the board of adjustment as opposed to going to the planning board.
Well, I think they're too separate. It's a misconception of bypassing.
Okay.
The planning board reviews major site plans and there are thresholds that have to meet the major site plans or a major subdivision. So, those are what the major projects that the planning board has to represent.
That project would still have to go through that.
That's correct, yes. So, if it meets the threshold for a major site plan for redevelopment, if it does meet those thresholds, like I said, they would have, they would have to the planning board. Now, to go to the board of adjustment, it's a special use permit and there are very specific uses that require special use permit. Those are accessory dwelling units. We've had some commercial off-site, commercial parking lots such as those are required there to form an agent of lane length. They had to give a special use permit for that. So, it doesn't qualify this as for a major site plan, but it needs a little bit more of review by a board than necessarily. So, that's, that's the difference. And then the variances are completely different where a project in the various departments just there are profit there to allow people that have situations that are very unique that they can ask for relief from the development code. And that's, that's, and they, if you need a variance, you very well may need to go to planning board as well. So, that's not, instead of the planning board, it's potentially in addition to.
You do have, I know at least one situation where people were waiting for stuff to come to the planning board and went to the board of adjustment. And, you know, they got two different, two different readings. What the board, what the planning board was wanting was some sort of a step ladder that you go up to get from point A to point B. I can see, you really get confused on the planning where you're saying, you're saying A and over here they're saying B, you're saying.
That was a very big situation.
Yes.
I hope that, and I know that that will never happen again.
Yeah.
Now, how do you, when you say that, which is a good thing.
Right.
How, do we have, do we have to do something to change the rules? Or do you, is that at your level to change the rules or how does that work? I know this is not budget, but.
Short answer, if I put this application originally, you provided away, we knew the parking was an issue. And the people, whoever took into the application and said that it was complete, said that they were issued with parking. They showed parking, so they said that it was complete, but it wasn't parking that met the UDA. So, from the very beginning, that was always an issue. So, personally, when I get an application, I don't want to take anything to the planning board that does not meet all of the minimum requirements that they needed at UDA. That, that's how the process should work. So, if they needed to come before the board of adjustments to do something about their parking, that should have happened previously. Then comes the planning board.
That's because this was applied for a couple of years ago.
That's correct, yes. It was slid in right before ordinance took effect.
It was applied just before the ordinance took place. Yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Before, yes. It was already in process. It was.
So, on infill, do you mean like redevelopment of profit? So, we've got some situations where a homemate, and I talked specifically in the kind of the downtown area where you've got a lot of non-conforming lots, but you have some that are conforming. Those can't be subdivided at this point. Because they wouldn't be, like, you couldn't recreate a thirty-three-foot wide lot downtown right now.
In the business district, potentially you could, because there's no lot size or lot width minimums for business district or the central district. So, that would allow potentially, you still have to have street access. So, there, it couldn't just be some random subdivision happening. When I say infill or redevelopment, I'm speaking of infill on these same lots and redevelopment of existing structures that either are sold or empty now, but people would like to.
Yeah, part of my question with regards to that is if you have a lot that, a branch that straddles four of those thirty-three-foot wide lots, you can't recreate four thirty-three-foot wide lots based on today's.
If, okay, so there's two sides of that story. If that branch was built from four thirty-three-foot lots and those lots were never legally combined to make one lot, then yes, they could redevelop, they could demolish that one house and have the four lots thirty-three-foot wide. And you are allowed to build each one of your lots legally. If they put those together as one lot, they may or may not be able to subdivide it. They have to be able to subdivide it to meet the current zoning standards for the lot. So, it has to meet the square footage and the lot width for that subdivision to happen.
It looks like what they did on Knight and Lord, but it looks like to me it was great. You put one lot, put five houses in there, probably two lots, maybe. You can reach every slant.
Right, I think that's what just some of those smaller thirty-three-foot lots, like to never work combined that happen to be built on.
So, having an individual parcel number helps you keep the property alive.
Yeah, because on CAF 18, there is a property with two structures on it. That was originally three lots.
Yeah.
That was at one point combined into one. And those property owners are trying to subdivide it again to put it back to how it was initially.
I meant the first day of Florida. First day is how Florida meant it. It's a very unfortunate situation.
How to do it. I, and this, once again, this is totally off the topic of your budget, but before I forget this thought. Noah and I and Rebecca went to a meeting yesterday in which two local representative, House representatives and senators were there. And they were talking about a bill that would allow the extra.
Accessory dwellings.
Accessory wells. And nothing in that bill currently talks about, and indeed for, some pervious.
Correct.
So, I mentioned it briefly, but I'll turn this one. But if the city were able to write something up so we could go and, they didn't seem to be against it because once you start saying, listen, you're going to cause stormwater, she was kind of, well, they, they had not thought of it.
Right, they did not.
And so, perhaps we can come up with some kind of language of the minimum amount. We probably have, whatever that language is, so we can push it to the mayors and push it to the others to encourage them to modify the bill before it goes, so sooner than later.
Probably pulled from, I mean, I know Indigo has pervious and pervious.
Well, all of the subdivisions will, so it's from states to one.
Well, we're in the process of trying to figure that out right now. So, once we create our guidelines as it relates to that, that would.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, this is my problem. I'm not sure if the state bill, if it gives it by right, you have to do it. And ours would be secondary to that and do they get to do it without that? And I'm not sure how that works.
I'm sorry, I read that bill, that there's still going to be requirements they have to meet locally. By right, you get to build this accessory dwelling unit, but you still have, still would have to meet manual setbacks. If we have a stormwater regulations in place, those would still have to be met. But you would be able to build your accessory dwelling unit.
So, pervious, surface coverage, all of those requirements could be baked in.
But we would have to have that, soon the bill is passed, they think everything's going to be done by July. If it is, and we don't have a stormwater plan yet voted on, somebody comes in at that moment, they would be able to get it in. I just throw that out for conversation as to.
We are working on the first part of the stormwater ordinance and it will be one of the.
Even if we have to do it in segments.
Yes.
Just to get part of it passed. We were told yesterday, they hope to have the whole budget thing wrapped up by July. I suppose it could still be billed that had no finance component to them after that. I'm not smart enough to know if that's true or not, but you should apply for it. Back to the basin chief.
Yes. The budget that we have proposed, there are just a couple of changes we would like to add for our Unico for the UDO. Right now, I am the keeper of UDO and I say that there are changes and then I'm putting on the web. So, inefficient, there's, mistakes can happen easily and each, each UDO administrator just has been updating this one Word document for years. So, I think that it's.
So, what are you missing?
For, to allow us to have the digital online Unico for the, for the unified development. This one is our.
So, the current online system that you save for all the.
For the city of itself.
It's archaic.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about it before, we currently have it online for the ordinance, but we don't have it online. This would take it to the UDA online and then as we update it, they will automatically update it. So, currently we're using.
Scan the entire document with the words.
Yes. Yes. And it'll be searchable just like the city ordinance is now.
How much is that?
That was.
Fifteen thousand four hundred. And that's under the contract services line? The breakdown of all those is underneath the. Yes, I'm sorry.
Is it always going to be fifteen thousand nine hundred or is that just to get it on and then it's they're going to probably let paint it every year because sixteen thousand dollars is a lot, it's a lot to set something online.
It is, my understanding is that it's one time, they put it on and then it reduces, I think it's about five thousand a year. Instead of what our payworth is.
Because you know, you can put a Google Doc online.
And it's actually, it's actually, it's actually subscription based. So, depending on how many updates, how much they charge us. So, that will vary per year what that charge is, but it's significantly less than fifteen thousand.
I was curious, well, that was my thought as well. So, what, what's the document say about? Do we own the doc? Does the doc reside with us and does it reside with them? If it resides with them, how secure is it in their, their system and what happens if it's hacked? What recourse do we have?
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not valuable information if it gets hacked. I mean, it's code. So, if it gets hacked and released, it's not, there's nothing proprietary about it. It's not like a financial system that would.
If it's hacked and it's modified.
Well.
The Chinese developers are coming in.
You mean like if somebody. I mean, I don't, that's just an extreme link that I've never heard of, but I don't think we, they do have.
If my little brain can think of it, somebody else.
They do have.
We would have to have.
We have internal firewalls, they would have other data firewalls that would hit it there.
Well, I just don't think we should throw it on a, a Google Doc that's available to the public to see and we lock it so nobody can make changes.
But that, that goes back to staff having to make it every time there's a change.
Tell me, explain to me the dilemma that, I'm sorry to ask for that, but is it a editing thing? That you have to go to the right spot to find it and how will this thing speed you up?
Editing, taking the time to make sure that they get taken care of. I mean, in the day to day, like, oh gosh, I have to go, you know. I got to the point where I was like, oh gosh, I missed one because it was just in the middle of everything happening. You know, you don't want to lose any words. Yes, you can copy and paste, but copying and pasting into a Word document from another PDF or something can turn into a nightmare at the same time. I think we'd be really having one place, right now there's four different UDOs from many, many years ago. People come into the office with UDO language from five years ago that means nothing at this, and they're already planning a project around it. So, then having one really secure place that we can guide people to visit, say, this is it. And then they will make sure they get updated, you know, regularly and timely. I think it's very important for the public.
Do they, are they?
Yes, maybe both, yes.
We would still have to do the manual part of reconciling the statute changes then.
Yes, we would have to go forward with the text amendments as we do now. So, it would be like any other amendments to the city ordinance now. So, by resolution, they would be adopted, if we send that then to, or by resolution or ordinance, then it is sent to the company. They upload it and then put it into where it should be.
And you're staff making the change and then it goes from there?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how many people will have access to this? You and staff? And Joe, we can't.
No. This would be when the Board of Alderman approved a text amendment. That text that is approved will go straight from your packet, sent to the company for uploading. So, there's no middleman, no changing. If it's adopted, it is sent to the company.
So, you said it was a chunk of the text, not the edited text, and then they replace it.
That's correct, they do the editing and all of the.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand why we're going to pay sixteen thousand dollars for somebody else to do it when we can do it for.
It wouldn't solve the issue. Currently, we are going in the Word document. Deleting text, implementing it again, re-packaging it together, uploading it to a PDF to then put it on the website. Versus now with this, we're taking the text of the updated ordinance, we're emailing it to them, they're doing it themselves in a cleaner format than what we could do.
But we can do it on a Google Doc. We just search, cut and paste and it's done and it uploads to the internet also.
Right.
And it, you just have a link on the website for people to see the most up-to-date version of it. And it's locked, so nobody can get to it.
I think that we've. Well, I know that I've been mentioned for four years about our city websites. And all of this lack of functionality that exists. So, if this is going to make it easier for us and staff to find the stuff, I, I don't like cost, but I mean, our, we are, it sucks.
We're already doing it. We're like, if we're updating, instead of updating a Word doc, updating a Google Doc, then already.
We would, we would be skipping that step forward, yes, we'd be assured.
You're still taking the step.
Initial step, yeah.
We're already used to this service, didn't you say?
That's correct, so the city ordinance are already using this, this part of the, this company. And so, that way everything would be there. So, right now, if you go to Unico of the city ordinances, it says unified development warrants. Then you hit that in a PDF, some document that may or may not be correct. And that could be the same with the Google Doc. It's really just the goodness of person work and I'm, I'm going with myself, going to it, I can keep up with it. And may have one place where it is housed and we know that it is correct and our citizens can go to it. I think that's very important. We're way behind on this. Every community that I know has their UDO with their city ordinances on the.
We can't.
Yes, we can, but this is just taking it from, yes, this, this initial cost was taking the document we have, uploading it, preparing it for the right format and surgical.
Point. There's no ways to do things. Timing your way through is not the solution sometimes. This is nothing about you, but we've got to figure out. I took the UDO, I put it on ChatGPT, in one of those GPTs where you could talk to it. And you could literally talk or upload that update and then do it for you for fifty dollars a month. Secure, doesn't matter whether it's secure, it's just like there's an easier, there might be other solutions. It's hard for you to go chase them because you're chasing other things. This is not your fault. We've got to, there, you need automation, but for sixteen thousand dollars, it seems excessive with what has come available to us in the last few years.
How difficult would it be to go to what Mark or Rebecca have been talking about? Even going to an already existent stuff that's not what we have now, but we can, we can do that. Say, my whole life's a lot of money. We've got to improve, we got to get better.
I think that's admittedly for the city manager, I don't think.
Yes, she is not, it's a planner, not developer. Even though planning, we're going to make you more of a planner than a reactor. Because we're not how reacting. We, I would guess you haven't done any planning because you haven't had a chance to. We haven't planned on jack, you know what? I want you to have automations, I preach automation. You got to be careful about that preaching part of it, but there are things to do, yes. We've got to figure it out. We, it's just sixteen thousand dollars. My wife always wants to pay somebody because of the.
Sixty thousand dollars, all of them.
Yeah. But there is, there has got to be another way and we've got to help you find that. How many updates do we do a year for this? And I'm sorry, I apologize. Because you got nothing to do with it.
There's anywhere from five to ten a year. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but sometimes it's been more than once. That one update made me more one section.
What you do, always, always.
So, okay, let, let's, let me go back to my rant on planning. Ask, I'm going to ask the question, if we were planning to build a parking lot, would you be in charge of that?
I would be in charge of helping find possibly the contractor, like the architect.
Okay. But, and you know, we have, so who would see, who do we go after if we want to build a parking lot in Atlanta? Who would we talk to to plan that? You, is that where we start for city manager?
Yeah, we'd get it, get it designed for that and then the contractor to build it.
And no budget for her for that, that would involve her in the budget.
More of a capital thing constantly.
Oh, of course.
Right.
Okay. That'll be, but I'm.
I will say this service, because I'm on a lot of UDOs around North Carolina and this service is, is this service that everybody uses now. I don't know if it's okay, I have a good point, I don't know that answer, but I will say this is typical. They are all using the same service for a reason.
I met the people who do our Airbnb programming and I, I think I heard this feeling when I explained to him, he made ten thousand dollars off of, off of a pipe script. And he realized I knew what I was talking about and he realized, he got it for doing that. And they doing some other things they want to do. We're, we're giving away money because we don't know how to do anything. That's not your fault.
That has a cost attached to it as well.
Yeah. But it's, it's diminishing cost if you get it done now and don't have to pay for it every year. Yeah. But it's, it's diminishing costs if you get it done now and don't have to pay for it every year. So yes, there has a cost, but it has better return than the long one. If we invest in these things, it don't cost us a subscription rate every year.
I was like, does any manager have some things to do here?
I'm on his behind about this, that's for sure. He is getting tired of hearing me. Uh, but that's the way we cut our costs. I want you to have the automation. Sixteen thousand will heal our problem. But every time we do that, we won't be on a problem. So that's like, okay. I appreciate what you do, but I want to make see planning, I know that here's some ideas about what we do next.
I love it. What is, what is the contract we basically, I imagine, like part of this is part of the upfront costs. It's putting it like literally taking this, putting it into a digital format, it's searchable and, I mean, that seems like right now, if you go and you search that PDF, it's, yes, does not work.
So if you put it into the G P D and ask it a question, it'll take you there.
It will.
I did just for fun about eight months ago, just for fun.
Yeah, I call Karen.
I don't know anymore. Honestly.
She knows where everything.
Basically, what you're saying is that system needs to be updated to, in essence, to complement you with all the other systems within, with, with, with all the other communities.
That's correct.
There are, all of them on that.
So that when someone's searching, they don't have to look for the planning page, like they can say Southport code and it takes them to the code page and they've got everything there, not just.
Could you do that? I will. Get a table, maybe it's, it's, uh, cause I don't know what the legalities or.
So we don't know what the next year's cost is. You threw out, you thought it was around five thousand.
I will, I will start you on that.
I would love to see other options for, like Mark was saying.
When's our other contract? Where'd you go? How much does that cost us?
It is.
You know. Which is showing.
Do we have a corporate subscription to even little bit of tech G P D L I L I M at all that our staff gets to use?
I know that we don't have a subscription at the city. I know there's several others that do use it, the free version. Um, so we can start looking in the subscription for everybody.
Um, you know, when we have these processes that we're doing like, just to an example, Shoreline stabilization. Uh, just, I know it's very crazy, but ask it, let's, could you give me a one to ten order of process of what I need to do to do this project? And see what happens. Just see what comes out of it. Or you'd have to have the data to put in, the contracts, you load the things in and say, I'm trying to administer this and see what it would say. I know that sounds crazy, but I've just been seeing some crazy results.
Well, it gives us, I'm very interested in that concept and that thing. It's not necessarily your budget cycle, but from the topic. And asking the manager to look into that so that using the shoreline as an example, we've never had a laundry list of all the things that we are requiring to make this work. And so, whether it's a, whether it's a survey.
Take older regulator, regulator, regulatory consultation, select stabilization strategy, develop engineering and planting plan, secure permits and funding, site preparation, implementation, monitoring and maintenance, long-term stewardship plan. And it breaks down, what to do for each of these. I just typed it in.
Make them sound small.
And so for the, for the, for the finish of that program and for all the other ones, there have a lot of moving pieces. We collectively as a city. Cause we don't have that list in front of us. We can't say that on this day, it's gonna be done. This is gonna be the next thing. And we don't end up again, not having surveys done on two feet of property that we should have had done two years ago. Cause where we are today, still surveys, still something to be done. And that's you gotta get better at that. So whatever that, I don't know if that falls into your bailiwick. That falls into Tom Stanley's bailiwick? I don't know whose bailiwick that falls into.
Well, our engineers, we, we did have staff engineers.
Right.
Until recent times. So I would like to think that our staff engineers, that's how.
Who do they, they fall under public works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the project, they're just doing the project plan.
Anything and it is not thinking, just that types of examples. There, there are other ways and, and and learning, they're coming up with ways to make, I know it's crazy, that they're making things that they never do about. Uh, not that we're gonna be creating the lightest phone material or whatever, but helping people sort of get a, I don't know how you could feel walking into a job being a planner and, and, and know everything and, and not have somebody to help you. And these models could at least give some ideas of direction, you know, um, so not that there, it's just, they need to be used. They're like, and, and I can, and I, I'm struggling with that sixteen thousand dollars and I'm not trying to take away from and I'll put that to a programmer all day long that'll give all of us some little solutions here and there.
So to move this along.
Yes, sir. Not moving, I know what I'm saying, so.
What I'm hearing is there's some, there's some agreement to go forward with this particular brand and there's others that want to see if there's other options. So for the manager, maybe we might wanna give him direction, look at some other options, but turn that around. Obviously, we're not gonna be soon, so that will come back and have enough. Maybe it would be rolled into your much discussion. Does that make sense?
It does. And then we pay about two thousand dollars a year for the subscription service for the regular code. So we, we would say that's double for, for the, so the main cost is just the initial conversion to their site.
And, and I think, a, a thing that's important with these kinds of programs is they're tried and proved. They, they're used throughout the industry. And when we start talking about innovative things, I'm all about innovative. But we know all of that is evolutionary. That, like everything, this is a fixed point in time and this works and for the foreseeable future, it's incumbent on these people to keep this working versus, I mean, we would need a staff person. Basically, I think, to be able to do, to be able to roll it out to staff and keep it evolving and all of that. Sounds to me, that would be a, a staff person. I'm asking Mark really.
And that, and I'm, I'm asking somebody that I trust. Do you think that what I'm talking about is ever willing?
In terms of using?
Using it just for processes, just to come up with ideas.
I mean, it could be possible.
So I'm talking to somebody that's worked, you're, you're, you know, in, um, the younger generation can use these things.
So I think we have, we're, we've got two different topics for rolling into the same thing. We had one just on her budget issue. And so my understanding is the manager's gonna look at both those things and come back with us during this budget cycle. The second one is using AI to look at how we might be able to better manage uh, large projects. I think that's a sums it up. And what are the options for doing that? How difficult is that? Because I would love to be able to go to a place, maybe only maybe we've opened up in the whole world. I don't care. As long as we're talking, get to it. But look to see, so now I have to bug the manager, where are we with this particular project? Because it would show me, these are all the points, these are the dates and packets that are supposed to get done. If they're not done, then somebody has to amend it on it. And then we can see that stuff going down the line. We can see what's supposed to, all the steps that are supposed to happen. And that, just to have a Word document done for each one of those, would be.
That'd be great.
Be difficult. So maybe he could look at that and maybe we can accomplish both of those things, but they're only two different budgets.
I used a L I L I M. I told him I wanted to create a piece of software to manage the cemetery. I told it everything I could possibly come up with, everything I had ever heard him talk about in a meeting. Pay this thing fifty dollars a month. I prompted it. It worked for about thirty minutes and created a piece of software with screenshots, an educational tutorial for the administrator to use to manage it and took our database and built the whole thing. It was a thirteen thousand dollar software that we were gonna buy. Now, what kind of proprietary protection do we need on our cemeteries? If it works, it works and it works. The only problem is I'm not smart enough to load it up. So then I said, teach me how to load this up. And that's what I'm doing. And I'm telling you, if we can do these things, you tell the computer what this service does. There's two ways. Tell it to go to the place and duplicate it. Now, y'all might not like that. So we'll tell you another one. Tell it what you want. Tell it everything it does and make me one. Make me a display with a G A N chart to show me where we are on all these things. And have a back office that they use to update. I know I'm sounding crazy talking about it. I'm not smart. I'm just curious. Is there?
Those are two different topics and we're.
But if the manager will look at all of those things.
And so we can move on to the next topic.
So again, this program can probably be created for pennies. And that's what we get ready to see.
But he's gonna come back to us with the.
Talking about the younger generation, you can do it, but what are younger?
It's called madness. I ain't no limit.
We have, we have somebody who has to leave at ten o'clock. We got twenty minutes.
Let's do it. Sorry.
Go ahead, man.
Um, otherwise, my budget's not changed, Jenny, from last year. Um, some of the numbers have gone down.
Net decrease.
So there's a net decrease on my, my, my whole budget. So that's including, that, that includes sixty thousand dollars in that. Um, so if there are any questions about that.
I have a question about Granica. Did man, um, did we end up collecting more tax revenue from rental properties? Like, did we, for, for the and did we find rental properties that weren't?
So committing, so for my part, apparently that I am over and I manage it was the code enforcement of short term rentals portion of that platform, we have found places that were non-compliant. We have sent letters. We have got people from short term to long term rentals. We have had people stop. We are constantly on top of those. We have followed up with people who have not come into compliance and our first letters were sent by grants. The tax enforcement portion was never, sorry. That was not part of my management. So I, that is, I can't answer those questions, but I think that my side of code enforcement, we find. That code enforcement, the short term rentals themselves, we are definitely on top of it. Every time there's new ones, we follow up. We have, uh, every other week, we have a meeting with the company to make sure that we're updating the, the the database where we find discrepancies or if they find something, like, no, that actually isn't, you know, a legal one or that is.
So Joey, at the next meeting, unless you're in right now, could you tell us what the network that generated money?
I can see there's been an increase in occupancy tax collected. I know Teresa had been spearheading this before she left. Um, and at that time, I think on our end, Granica, so we're working on identifying the properties that weren't paying the city. Um, so we have been working through that and we talked with Mo last week about making sure that we have all the proper access. Um, Teresa, except was the one.
We're just looking for. I understand Rebecca's question. So we pay X amount of money. Are we getting at least that much money more back?
I can definitely check and see if we've seen that increase yet.
Well, I think the real purpose of this is.
Right.
That, that is doing its job.
If, if, if it's bringing these people online, whether or not we're making a lot of money or not, this is not as important, but it is a good number than that.
One of the, one of the other challenges associated with that is that some of the R B O and others are sending lump sums and not really any accounting for those individuals. Correct. So Airbnb, R B O, Expedia pay the city a lump sum and refuse to give us any kind of remittance of what properties it's for. So if it is through those sites, I mean, we may see an increase payment monthly from them, but it could just be additional booking to them if it's any actual.
Right. But those services are collecting the occupancy tax and remitting it already. So outside of those services is really what I'm looking for.
Okay. Yeah, we can try and find that. It's the only ones that we have a breakdown or if it's individually rented out or.
Which would be the ones that would need to come into compliance because the ones on Airbnb, the R B O and Expedia and Verbo actually feeds Expedia. So that's how that works. Uh, but those are already in compliance because of the way that their business is structured.
Right. Unless they're being run illegally. So they're paid, but not necessarily in compliance.
But for, uh, not, not necessarily in compliance for, but for tax purposes.
Yes.
We're not going to be able to make a change on that because they are compliant for taxes.
Can Airbnb be a home stay? Can you Airbnb? So, so how do you parse between you can home stay and, and not?
We could, we could, we can, when we go one to the platform, it's they, if you'll say that it's just a room rather than a whole house or a bar and room, however they're breaking, but the lump sum, we can't parse that out.
That's right.
And how often do we get those payments?
Monthly.
And it's monthly.
Rebecca, can, can you not opt out of paying those taxes and say you're gonna pay them yourself? Not on Airbnb, not on Expedia, on Verbo, I have to look at that. I was curious, because there was something you could opt in and out of. I thought somebody told me. I don't know what they're about.
Yeah.
One last question. Your revenue for like, I'm not sure, are you asking for twenty five thousand or you getting twenty five thousand or more?
We're anticipating twenty five thousand dollars more than what was adopted this year.
Okay. Cause I was looking at the, you know, request.
Right. So that's the revenue is just, that's what we're projecting in revenue for that line item this year. And then why do we think that?
Cause we've received any one year today, first budget in forty. So we're anticipating, sorry, seeing if we can make a budget.
Is there anything else, man? Anything from the?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, looking at revenues and similar penalties. Are these penalties that we have to pay the school system?
No, we do not pay this in schools.
So we can retain those penalties?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, I noticed under travel and training, it says N C A C O U, but there's not something listed. So I didn't know what that was. I'm just curious.
I like the, I mean, officials, um, dues for.
I didn't see it as a.
One, um.
So I didn't know.
Probably under first national bank.
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then, um, I'm not a member. I can have better examples of that. I'm sorry. Uh, the, uh, also for, I see that it says H P C training. Uh, what about planning board and board of adjustment training? Do you have monies?
We can. This one was specific just for this year because the school government for that four hundred ninety five dollars, they had a special online um, training specifically for historic reservation commissions.
Sure.
To go over, um, certificate of appropriate dust and just happened to apply to officials and to Brady Moore to give them all. So we can definitely include some.
Because I think we were hoping that every year there'll be ongoing training.
So we, and we did have training with the board of adjustment and the planning board with Brady. So Brady came and had in-person training for both of those boards. It's very similar, but they are already up to speed, most of them.
Is he doing that after each appointment? Is that kind of?
That's how we, yes. So after this last appointment with the new members, he came and spoke with him and did a training session.
Okay. So you go on that crap. What did he do? So for his attorney space, now that brings me to like attorney space that you need to represent the city and board of adjustment meetings as an example. How, how is that? I know you've got each of them.
Yes.
But he is actually the board of adjustments.
And or planning board is necessary. Um, so I believe that was just if all our administration, that come up in that expression because it represents the city.
That's right. Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
And then with that, Brian, can you? And then with that, Brian, ask you anything?
He's not an attorney, would that be? Representing the city?
Yeah.
You represent the board of adjustment.
Brady is one of the, of the government.
Oh, I thought you, I said, I meant Ray. Ray's not the guy.
Not represent the city, he represents the board.
Correct. Yeah, well, the city or? No.
Well, he's more of an offering guidance to the young, older procedure and bank security out.
The right shoulder.
Right.
But if we needed an attorney to represent our interests, it would be, it would be Brady.
And he does not come to every meeting. He only comes to those that we feel that we need.
And then the other thing that I have just had a question as far as, uh, working with the county council of governments, like we're dealing with the Olay, that's potentially still a conversation. If we get, or, I mean, if we get state's interest. Uh, so I didn't know.
I saw that too.
But I just want to make sure, the only reason I'm saying this is I was trying to make sure you have the money you need to do.
So we can buy the contract services.
And so that just shows, that blank line shows year-to-date as nothing. So within that contracted services line, we have funds to use for them.
Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure you have what you need.
Yes.
And then have to do all of the things you need to do, that's all.
You have music, but you use it all the time here.
That's right, and we actually, we just received a invoice for their services that we've used for the past few months. So that's why it doesn't show yet on this line item.
I got you, yeah, I got you.
That's year-to-date.
And then, and I know, I'm guessing Kyle's here because he's going to do this budget. But, but in a, but just looking at the numbers. So your number is 426. Then if I look at Kyle's numbers, it looks like, uh, two, there, they have 2.1 over an estimate. That's what the 241,000 changed. So that really.
True.
The plan, plan page.
Page.
Or final line.
Yes, 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 sorry.
Okay, and then, so really, the department. Are we able, my question, that we're able to use that money to offset?
Heard of, yeah.
So then that really brings us down to 185, uh, 185,000 for that number because we're using the permitting fees.
Right.
Nice.
Also, some of the cog expenses have gone under the capital studies and plans. That's what that invoice that Noah was talking about, so they haven't been.
Okay, yeah, just as long as, I just want to make sure we had all the money.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Any one in the park school?
Any not in the park school?
Okay.
That's about the 20.
Okay, I think so, $1,000 is, you got $1,000 for PD Tyson, or?
That was for, um.
And that's year-to-date, so that's not what we're projecting going forward.
Okay, okay.
That was for training, so she went to the NCDO conference and her juice for that and some other training.
Are we trying to look for the next assistant clerk or the next, or we?
You got it, you got it, no.
Yes, sir.
Got it, sure.
Thank you. Good morning.
All right, let's talk about the inspection department a little bit. Just a background, I think everybody knows what the inspection department does, pretty cut and dry. Uh, we are a three-people staff, uh, building department. Uh, for a small number of people, we do, in my opinion, an excellent job and drag the public getting our inspection done, the state will do it two days or sometimes even same day, uh, inspections. Uh, we strive for customer service and helping publicly company with questions, concerns about any permits, whether, uh, they have questions about, you know, why did permit, uh, costs so high or so low? Or, you know, just things of that sort. Um, a couple of goals for the department, uh, you know, we're only three people, so our goals are kind of, kind of a little lower right now, but, uh, all inspectors, including myself, to, to achieve a level three in all the trades, which is the highest state can, can give us. Uh, it, it'll take a few more years to get that. Uh, Mike is, uh, he's level one now standard, he'll be starting as level twos next year. Uh, and we were trying to get PD as a permit, certified permit tech when the state has that program available. That program is not funded yet. It's kind of just out there saying that they have to do it, but we're not giving you money to do it, so it's open. Basically, the inspection department, uh, like I said, is pretty cut and dry and you can have the drills and balance there. Uh, so if you guys have any questions, the cloud, any bugs, I mean, I can do some of those.
I have a question for you, so you were having a line that I've been hearing a year ago to Eileen Hennessy, which is a senior IT. You have a, you have a thing here, uh, for Eileen Hennessy. We put them 2024, it's like 3,000 now. I'm assuming that now I have an IT.
Yeah, that was.
So, uh, is it, did I miss it here, but is there another IT line for them, for the new?
So IT is all encompassed, uh, mine, we've split them out now that we contract Catalyst, they're in their own department. Um, so this is to show them that Kyle had IT money spent in 2024.
There is no increase, the overall, um, fee you were paying.
Right, correct.
It has some, it's not.
Yeah, this is just, well, this is the list of every vendor we've paid out of this department the last two years, so there's nothing budget for Eileen that's coming here.
I haven't seen the no Eileen part, but I'm trying to figure out.
Right.
He's not getting IT services from her, and he's getting IT services from the new company.
Where is it?
Where is that?
Under admin, so it's the whole bulk contract is under admin for the entire city.
Okay. They should have their own department, are we going to have a tutorial on that?
Well, it's not necessarily some department, it is from a budgetary standpoint, but not, I mean, it's sub admin, so.
Well, I guess my question is, because we don't have onsite.
Oh, right.
That's an issue that I would like at least us to have a discussion about. How we fund it, if we funded all of that is another topic, but.
When is the renewal of that? When, when do we renew that? You told us.
It is, um, it's not necessarily a renewal period, it's, it's automatically ongoing. So I think it is something that I have looked at. There are several options out there, whether we want to look at another contractor to have a higher roof range, have some services that Catalyst offers, uh, from a security standpoint, uh, cloud storage standpoint, and then have some more onsite services. Or do we want to go to a full staff person?
Are you planning to do that this budget yet?
I'm still reviewing some options, so to determine, I, I don't think, it's not going to make a difference in the budget process, so. But the money, the money will be, we're appropriate that money in the line item. And then if the review goes past July 1, then we can change that one in that line item.
So we just renewed with Catalyst in January for the one year. And let's see.
About 100,000, I think.
Believe us, buddy, for 110,000, I have right here.
And I'm trying to figure out what we get for that. So, that's that, it's his budget. Another discussion, but could you, Brian, could you make us small, at least make each mark, or can that, how that works? What do we get for 110,000? And then what are we not getting, if we might want?
We had budgeted a flat $100,000 for him this year.
I mean, I, I don't even use on laptop. I got problems with password or whatever, I haven't used in six months, but not anybody's called, not called someone.
Right.
Uh, do you use?
I think it would be valuable to have a staff person in-house all the time. The, and then we could better pursue these AI things and so on. I think where we run into some challenges is what upgrades will we need to get from my, um, standpoint of equipment for stores and that.
Could, could, that whole thing?
Right.
Can you bring it back another day?
Yeah.
I wasn't.
Thank you.
Okay, um, there is a few changes in this budget. Uh, we went from four, four, four-time employees to three, and that does reflect on, um, the first contract cost from 255, nine five eight, two thirty six, eight eight one. Uh, Mr. Man, moving through the purpose position, that is the purpose position. Not much else changing in this budget. Um, I think we did do a line item for actually contract services, we had some money for, for Mr. Bill Bruce, who is a third-party inspector. Uh, he's a part-time level three inspector that we're still using. Of course, a level three inspection that I don't have certification yet, uh, mainly a level. A level three. It would be a level three building, the, uh, car, who was that, for me? Uh, Mr. Bill Bruce, he's been.
I saw his name on this.
Yes, it's on the third page, first contract services person. Um, you know, level three building, uh, would be at the car building. Uh, any, any restaurants that are two stories in the city. So he would do those inspections until I get my certification, which would be probably a year from now. His services will still be, uh, needed for next year.
So that he doesn't do all of that, he just uses, does some.
Just a high level, it's a high level. It's the highest.
So we, we can do that.
We can do the level twos, we can write out what they would cut out.
How many?
Yeah.
Roughly.
Um, not many, it's a handful, but they're, they're important, about a hospital is less than.
Yeah, right.
Uh, the, the new car building coming up is going to be a level three. Uh, the Bullfrog Corner Building, when he goes, that'll be a level three. Um, the new building, uh, J-Swing, uh, I think there's a hotel coming in at some point, that will be a level three. There's only a few level three buildings here.
Can I deposit? That may be hard, have you heard, I mean, is that a?
Last I spoke with those, this is the two years ago, it was everyone building top.
Yes, sir, okay.
So I'm not sure how this is going to work out.
Yes, sir.
Partially, but.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Like I said, not much of a change in the budget. We did, we did go from 575 or adopted FY '25 to 625. I think that's very conservative with the, with the market weight is now and how volatile it is with the tariffs and things. We just don't know what's going to happen, so I'd rather be conservative on revenues than overreaching revenues, like this. Even though we did, today we've made 682 to 14, uh, today, and that's because of a lot of. Having hitters, you know, we had a hospital coming in, which is a nine-half communal project.
You did do inspections on that.
On which one?
On the hospital?
Hospital right now, I'm doing the building, plumbing and mechanical, and Mr. Bruce is doing the level. Uh, so we had a hospital with two major projects there, the renovation inside and the renovation outside. Then a couple homes that were in the four and a half, that were being built in Southport. So that's why that number is elevated right there.
We have homes that.
Sheriff has a building that's. Very, very nice.
I've got two doors.
Mike, when, when we do a level three inspector, is there a way that we can have that inspector do everything and free you up for something else? Sure. It would cost more.
It would, it, he charges by the inspector, so it would cost per place. He's very reasonable in his price, he only charges 630 dollars on inspection. But he's a group, very, very reasonable. And he's welcome out.
And cool.
Yeah, he's a very welcome out.
Yeah, Mr. Wayne Floyd retired, man?
I don't think he is, okay, just did his, like, continued education.
No.
So he's still keeping his certificates up.
Old school knowledge.
Yeah. Can be.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I do think we need to make note out loud that that means Kyle has all this other level.
Eight levels.
That I were proud to give you.
I have two this year, I have, I have my probationary's three and plumbing and gas, I should say for those that's by December, so I should have those.
I just want to say, this is all.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's tough, it's not easy.
It was a great job. Thank you for your, yeah, you're welcome. Yes, sir. Any other, any other bits? Lo, are you on the?
No, she didn't, she just said, she just watched, she didn't want to.
Okay, you want to talk? Um. All right, you. So before I ask for a, uh, move to a German, and I'm doing this in a public setting, so I'm just prepared with. We need to have a meeting tomorrow. It'll be a closed session, and hopefully we'll be with a lawyer, but it'll, it'll need more. You said that you could not meet in the morning, but only after 1:00.
Um, anytime after 1:00.
Is that going to be, is it, I don't care if it's in the evening, it can be in the evening, but we have to meet tomorrow, so. Is, is everybody available? Robert cannot meet until 2:15. So that's a problem. I don't know, I don't know.
Can we?
I don't know if we could do it in the morning and then I just brief you second.
Um, I've got a, I've got a, uh, board meeting number, uh, any good, 4:30. Uh, they'll do a show up and be the other board members. So the activity is going to be quick, with the management.
So would you, do you mind? I mean, I'm, I'm meeting with you and Robert can come with me and we'll talk with you and, and fill you all in. If we do it 10 o'clock in the morning. Is 10 o'clock good for?
10:30.
10, 10:30 good for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that, I know it's good for Rob. If we go down to real low, they, they have to go back to do that. I just want to make sure that they don't want to see page. All right.
We're meeting.
Uh, here, right, we got this one.
10:30, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just got a thing that's probably related to this. I can meet anytime, yes. But that's good. So with that in, in mind, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
May Paul and Taylor?
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous? Thank you very much.